...like there but nothing here. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the, uh, welcome to 2016, everybody. And our meeting, January 5th, 2016, of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. Uh, we've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening for the council meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion, second, to adopt the agenda. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Uh, we've got a consent agenda with numerous items on it. Um, Member Brindle has indicated she wanted to pull 4D. Anyone else in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Manager Neil, anything you want off the consent agenda? Okay. All right, with the exception of 4D, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion, second, to approve the, uh, everything on the consent agenda with the exception of 4D. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Member Brindle, this is Resolution 2016, Designating the Official Newspaper for 2016.
Right, and this is, uh, Resolution 2016 dash oh one, Designating, uh, the Edina Sun Current as the city's official newspaper. What that means is that, uh, we rely on the, and we contract with them, do we not, um, uh, and to, uh, to have our official notices, uh, published in the Edina Sun Current. And that, to me, supposes that the Edina Sun Current is, uh, is distributed to everyone in the city of Edina, all voters, all homeowners, all, uh, all residents in the city, and that is not the case. Um, in some neighborhoods, in single-family neighborhoods, um, the circulation isn't 100 percent, and it should be, uh, and that's a quality control issue for the Edina Sun Current. Um, but a growing population and a population that is going to continue to expand is rental housing in apartment buildings, uh, is, um, is owned homes in condominiums and townhomes. Um, and as a rule, I guess, the Edina Sun Current is not distributed in multifamily housing units. And if we are going to continue to expand, um, uh, the number of apartments in our city, I think we have to look at how we're going to get our city's notices to those residents so they're aware of our business when they want to be informed of something. Uh, I think it's, I think it's a pretty serious issue. If we rely on the Sun Current to be our official newspaper, then it really ought to get, uh, get to everyone in our city.
Question?
Member Swenson?
Don't, in our study for communication, isn't that our second most-read thing other than our quarterly magazines? So what other option would we have other than that? Because the Star and Tribune certainly, I mean, we could publish notices and that, but I don't think that has a higher readership in Edina, unfortunately, than the Sun, so...
Manager Neil?
Yeah, this is, um, this, there's a lot behind this particular issue, as, as you're aware, members.
I'm not saying don't have them be our official newspaper. I'm saying we have a problem to solve.
There, there is, and there's, there's some, there's some aspects of that problem of how the newspaper is distributed that we can, that we can address with them in terms of their quality control. Um, we have attempted in the past to address the issue of distribution of the paper in multifamily housing projects, and, and the reply we get back from the newspaper is, "We'd like to, but, uh, the, the property owner won't let us in or won't allow us to have a, a newsstand to put our paper because they, they say it makes a mess and they don't want a mess in their common space." So that's a common response that we get from, from both the newspaper and, and some of the multifamily housing owners. Um, I don't think we've had some, I don't think we've had any research done or we've not had the discussion here about whether we have the authority to mandate, you know, in a, in a multifamily house, uh, housing complex that owner shall provide a location for the newspaper record. Uh, I don't know what our city attorney would say about that, 'cause I haven't asked him, but I know we have not had that kind of discussion either in staff or at the council level. But that might be one way to address it because they're not willing to address it after lots of discussions, actually, uh, on their own.
Well, can we, um, add to, add, yeah, under city council or under something for residents, for businesses, um, an official notices link and have official notices appear on the website so that if they don't get the Sun Current, at least they had, they might have access to it on the website?
Councilmember Brindle, members of the council, we do currently post all of the public notices on our website under City Offices Administration. So that, that is happening. We, uh, could work to provide a link in the packet if necessary, but it, they are already out there.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to lift it from under that to make it immediately accessible rather than having people go to City Offices Administration and then find it there. I'm not sure everybody would think to go there, so I'd rather see it more accessible, maybe up in the four residents.
Member Stewart?
Does the, uh, do citizens have access to the content of the Edina Sun Current through online?
Yeah.
Does the Sun Current have its own online?
They do.
So they have, they can either come through the Edina City website and find those notices, or they can go through the Sun Current website and find those notices.
If, in fact...
If they don't get the physical delivery of the paper.
Yeah, well, the website is really terrible.
It's terrible.
Director of the Sun Current one?
Oh, yeah, it's really awful, yeah.
Director Benneron?
Thank you. Um, in addition to posting, um, the public notices on our own website, we are in ongoing dialogue with the Sun newspapers to improve circulation in our community, to which they are open to the idea. Um, as one, um, way for people to get a physical copy of the paper, in 2015, we did add a newspaper rack in the lobby here of City Hall, and approximately 100 papers are delivered here each week for people to come in first, come first served to take those papers. We have additional drop-offs, um, at businesses throughout the community, um, and many of those places offer those papers free of charge as well.
Curiosity, do we have papers left over?
Some weeks we do, some weeks they are all gone.
Okay. Well, I'll give you an example. Uh, last week's issue of the Sun Current was a recap of 2015 from the mayor's point of view, from schools, et cetera. It's not on their website. It's Lakeville.
Yeah.
It's, uh, Bloomington, it's, uh, Better Business Bureau, it's National Carbon Monoxide Poisoning Awareness Month, it's, um, you know, it's a variety of things, but nothing relating to the current issue of the Sun Current. So, uh, that's, that's my concern.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, um, the information is, uh, is not easy for people to find, and that's the purpose for having an official, uh, designating an official newspaper, is so that it is easy to find so our residents are informed.
All right.
I'll move that issue.
All right.
I'll second.
We got a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2016 oh one, which designates the official newspaper for 2016 as the Edina Sun Current. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Uh, before we move on to the next section of the agenda, uh, in, uh, our consent agenda, under item 4L, was a new wine, uh, on-sale wine and beer license that we issued to Coconut Thai. And in coming into the meeting this night, uh, tonight, I had a chance to visit with some of the, uh, folks that are involved in that operation. And Joe, why don't you come forward here and, uh, and this is your chance to kind of tell our community through our city council meeting about the new restaurant and, and what kind of food you're gonna offer over there, when you open. Uh, I think you're already open, but you now have a wine and liquor, uh, beer license. Go ahead.
So, hi, my name is Joe. Um, I'm one of the partner at Coconut Thai. We located at 3948 West 50th Street, so just behind the Migo and Sun. Uh, we're selling authentic Thai food. Um, what I think differentiate us from other Thai restaurant is we offer really fresh ingredients, and I think, to me, as we, um, try to be more healthy by using no MSG. Most of the, you know, Thai restaurant use, you know, um, MSG and, so most of our stuff can be made good and free. Uh, we offer bar rice, uh, for the customer. Uh, we open seven days a week. We've been open for almost four months already. Um, really good feedback from, um, Edina people so far, and, um, yeah.
All right, good. Well, thank you, Joe, and best of luck.
Thank you, thank you. So, I hope to see you guys over there very soon.
Can I come up?
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right, um, we have nothing for the, uh, special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda tonight. Is there anyone in the, in the audience who wishes to come forward and raise an issue with the council under the community comment portion of the agenda? All right, seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to report some recommendations. The first matter we have there is Resolution 2016 dash 10, calling for a public hearing for the Grand View Two Tax Inc. Financing District. Manager Neil, have you got that?
Uh, I do, Your Honor. The, the only action on, on this item for the council to take is to adopt, uh, the matter and set the public hearing. That then starts the, a, a number of subsequent actions, including informing the other taxing bodies of the, of the public hearing, uh, including sharing with them, uh, the nature of the project, the nature of the, the proposed financing, et cetera.
Good. Uh, any questions from council members? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution.
So moved, second.
Got a motion, second, to adopt the resolution, as stated, 2016 dash 10. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And then the next matter is the resolution relating to, uh, grants and donations. Is there a motion there?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion, a second, to adopt, uh, Resolution 2016 dash oh eight involving various grants and donations. And, um, with regard to this matter, discussion portion, Member Brindle, you might want to comment on, uh, the significant gift from the crime fund.
The Edina Crime Prevention Fund is, uh, private, uh, 501(c)(3), and, uh, it's a group that, uh, started back in the 1970s for the purpose of, uh, allowing, um, allowing the, uh, the community to, uh, to donate to a foundation that supports the Edina Police Department in order for the Police Department to turn around and offer, uh, rewards for tips. And, um, currently, there is, uh, there's a reward out for $3,000 for tips on, um, on theft from construction sites. We, uh, we've had, we've had problems at construction sites, and then we, we had a strategy that kind of affected that for a while, and now evidently there's, there's been, uh, a little more activity there. So, uh, but the Crime Prevention Fund exists, uh, solely to support the Edina Police Department, and this gift of, uh, little over $13,000 supports the Bike Patrol Program. And when you visit Edina's parks in the summertime, in spring, summer, and fall, you might see, uh, officers, uh, patrolling on bicycle, and, uh, and so this is in support of that program.
Very good. Thank you. We got a, any more discussion? Do we have a motion and a second on this matter? I can't recall.
Yes.
It was moved and seconded.
All right, thank you. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. Uh, motion 2016 dash oh eight is adopted. Um, next we are on to correspondence and petitions. Uh, anything, uh, other than what was on the dius this evening? Manager Neil?
No, that's all.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, aviation noise update. Uh, it's been a couple of weeks of holiday time. Member Swenson, anything to report there?
I haven't had any, any calls or any emails, and we haven't had a meeting for the NAC, so I think the meeting is next month, and I'll have to check on the time and report back to you at the next meeting.
Okay, good. Uh, Manager Neil, anything related to aviation noise update?
We've had, uh, a little bit of dialogue with the noise folks regarding annual conference, so we're, uh, kinda nailing down time, location, date, et cetera, for, for council members as well.
Okay. Uh, mayor and council comments. Uh, council comments first. Uh, Member Staunton?
Couple of quick things I noticed from the, um, correspondence. First, uh, I know we've got the state-of-the-community event coming up in, is it February?
Uh, it's the end of February.
End of February.
February 24th.
And, um, uh, we got a piece of correspondence from folks who live in the northwest corner of the city who have been asking us to encourage the school district to include them in open enrollment. Uh, we've explained to them repeatedly that we can't do much about that, but I think they raise a valid point that our community consists of more than just one school district, and, in fact, uh, in conversations with Manager Neil, I have learned over the last few months that 30 percent of the households in our community are not in the Edina School District. And so I agree with the letter writer that we ought to, uh, include or at least invite the Richfield School District and the Hopkins School District to participate in our state-of-the-community event, and I don't know what the status of that is or whether it's possible, but I think it would be a good idea. Um, second point is, um, we did get some correspondence. We've been having some ongoing correspondence, I think, all of us, on, uh, issues related to a potential sidewalk on Valley View between Mark Terrace and Gleason, I believe. I did have a chance to drive that, uh, just the other day, and actually, right after I drove the roundabout down by Braemar, which was terrific, and we got a nice piece of correspondence complimenting us on that. And I, I wanted to, um, compliment, um, Mr. Milner on his attentive responsiveness on that, and I understand it's a challenging issue, but I do, I, I'm very sympathetic to the points he's raising, and I think everybody seems to be on the same page that we need a sidewalk in that area. And I just wanted to raise the issue up and, and see if there's not some way for us to figure out a way through that. I know it's a matter of priorities and it's a matter of, we got a lot of folks in line. Good news is we got people who are asking for sidewalks, and I want to be responsive to that, but that does seem like a particularly treacherous, uh, path. And we have a really nice sidewalk for half the distance, and it's that other half the distance that I'd like to see what we can figure out. Yeah, less than half, but...
Well, but it's just not the issue of building the sidewalk, it's the issue of rebuilding the road, correct? Because that doesn't have the right width, and the road isn't the right place, isn't exactly in the right place for a sidewalk right now. So to move the sidewalk forward without moving the road forward, to me, is not feasible. Am I mistaken?
Uh, Councilmember Swenson, if you, as an example, Interlochen right now, we are doing a standalone sidewalk project.
Right.
So we try to design it for future width of the roadway. We could do that on Valley View Road also. It's a major concern, is if you drove it, the trees that are there, the retaining walls, there'd be some major impacts. We ask for more feedback from the neighborhood, um, and that's what this individual has given us. But we can do them standalone, but we prefer to do them together. There's savings and stuff like that. But right now we're looking at 2018 to begin construction of pieces of that sidewalk.
Well, we've already approved the 2016 project.
Correct.
And that's the money that we have. And luckily, we got a grant for the Cornelia one, I noticed, which will help.
Correct.
But aren't we meeting with, the 2017 is part of other road reconstruction projects often? So are we saying that we would not put a sidewalk in a road reconstruction project and do this one instead? 'Cause that's where, again, I know it's financially more feasible to do them at the same time, so...
So we prioritize in that our street projects should be first, 'cause there's a savings. We can get more bang out of the, uh, each dollar if we do it part of a street. So then we have, that's about half of our PACS funding.
Right.
We have another half where we look at, where do we spread that around on some of the standalone ones? One's Cornelia, Interlochen, we got one on Vernon with the county, we did one on Xerxes. We have a big Xerxes one, we got another grant. So we get grants, we have to match. So 2017, almost, that half of the PACS is going towards the Xerxes sidewalk where the missing segment is over there, and we have to match the grant, so...
Hey, we don't want to lose a grant.
So we're trying to slot it in as quickly as possible, and 2018 is where we could start to maybe build about half of it, and then maybe in 2019, the other half. But we don't want to take away from the street projects, 'cause that's our opportunity there.
You know, and one, and one of the upsides you, you get from having this long, this relatively long horizon of notification for street projects is you give residents a long time to, to kind of plan and think about that project. But one of the downsides is we're not as flexible when we have a situation like this.
Well, that's an incredibly expensive sidewalk segment, too, compared to a lot of them that we've built, because we haven't, yeah, we haven't built half of it already. We've maybe built a third, maybe? Yeah, okay.
But we could, we'd be, we'll take a look at, to see what, what our options are. I, I think you're right, though, your assessment, that we all, I think we all agree. Um, yeah, it's, it's an important segment.
Other matters?
Just wanted to raise the issue, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Member Swenson?
I'm good.
Um, Member Stewart?
Yeah, I would like to, uh, first concur with Member Staunton's observations, both on the, uh, fact that we do have three school districts that are part of this community, and we should make sure that we are inclusive when it comes to, uh, all of our relations with them. And, uh, I concur about the sidewalk issue as well. Uh, though, I, I, as, uh, Member Swanson and, and Director Neil pointed out, uh, it is, or Manager Neil, it, it is difficult to advance that on the schedule because of some variables. Um, in addition to that, uh, in the correspondence, um, there was, uh, a suggestion that Edina become a commemorative partner for a Department of Defense 50th Anniversary Commemoration for Vietnam War veterans. Uh, I'd like to ask if we can look into that and, and, uh, see what it means to become a commemorative partner. It seems like a worthy, uh, undertaking, and, and I think, uh, probably doesn't, uh, become too taxing on us as a community. But we do want to honor those veterans, and so, uh, let's look into that, if we could, Manager Neil.
Mm-hmm.
Also, uh, in our correspondence, there was, um, uh, some, uh, suggestion that we look into whether or not we should, as a municipality, sort of get ahead of the issue of, uh, some of these, um, new, uh, commerce setups such as Airbnb. Uh, and, um, I guess I'd like to find out if there are other municipalities that have, uh, passed some ordinances that, um, seem to make sense in terms of, um, sort of managing the growth of that kind of an industry, if we can. So thank you for that.
I think that's good.
Also, uh, I want to offer respects to the families of three different Edinans who've died in the last two weeks. Um, first Scott Belkin, uh, the first two are both high school classmates of mine from the class of 1977. Scott Belkin, um, is perhaps the biggest, uh, hockey fan of the Edina Hornets, uh, that we ever had. I think he went to every single game. Uh, but Scott passed away sadly in, in just a few weeks ago, as did, uh, my classmate, Evan Applequist. Evan, uh, remarkable guy, was a, was the dentist for the President of the United States for a period of time, so, um, pretty distinguished career in dentistry. And then, uh, finally, uh, my former colleague in law at Frederickson &amp; Byron, Neil Weickert, uh, passed away, longtime resident and an active volunteer in the community. So, um, my condolences to each of those families. Uh, I do want to also wish you a Happy New Year to everybody, and, uh, also want to say that, um, this Friday at Linden Hills Park, Mindy Ailer and Paul Thompson are going to be giving a report back to the community following their attendance at the climate conference in Paris. Uh, and they're really, uh, working to invite everybody to help build a pathway to a livable future for all generations. So encourage people to come, 6:30 to 8:30 Friday evening for that. And then Monday, the 18th, is, uh, uh, we celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day, uh, so, uh, want to remind you of that. So our next meeting is Wednesday, the 20th.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. Uh, I have three things. Um, Member Stewart, uh, talked about, gave condolences, uh, recognizing a few people, and, uh, I will add to that list. Uh, Patrick Kennedy passed away on December 28th. Uh, he was a founder of Edina Morningside Rotary. He was one of the charter members, and I am a member of that club, as is Mayor Hovland and Member Staunton. And, um, so we, uh, send our condolences to his wife, Annie, also a member of our club, uh, and then to, uh, to Pat's entire family. Um, he will be missed. I mean, uh, he had an enormous amount of energy, and you can still, you can still kind of feel his energy in the room because all of us have benefited from his leadership for so long. So our hearts go out to, uh, go out to Annie. Um, there is a new bus line starting on January 19th, and it is, uh, on your screen right now, S2S, suburb to suburb. So information about this new bus line is available at s2s494.com. And the significance of this line is that it's suburb to suburb without going downtown to the hub. So, uh, it is from Shakopee to Maple Grove, going through the Golden Triangle, uh, and, uh, I should look at my notes, um, and Golden Triangle, and then, uh, uh, let's see here, Shakopee's Marshall Road Transit Station and Station 73 in Plymouth via Southwest Station or Golden Triangle in Eden Prairie. So this is going to be a very robust area, uh, of businesses and people, uh, who are commuting from the, from the southwest suburbs where we are to Shakopee, uh, which is the recipient of some amazing businesses, including Shutterfly, Amazon, Data Card, you name it. Uh, but Amazon is building an enormous, uh, facility in Shakopee. And so this is, uh, this is what is being known as a demonstration line, and so this, uh, the line will start and it will be conducted for a period of time to demonstrate the need and the ridership in, on this line. Right now, if you want to take a bus from Edina to Plymouth, for example, you have to go downtown. And so the purpose for this is to eliminate going downtown, so you can just go on that bus from one southwest suburb to another. And so s2s494.com. The service is, uh, is a collaboration between Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, Maple Grove Transit, Plymouth MetroLink, and Southwest Transit. The buses that will be used on this line are buses being provided by Southwest Transit and Minis, uh, Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. So we're very excited about it. Uh, those of us on the 494 Commission, uh, received a nice, uh, program about this recently, and we'd like to definitely promote it to, uh, to anyone who could, uh, leave their car at home and, uh, and use this line. It's $2.25 per ride. Uh, it's a one-seat ride from Shakopee to Maple Grove. So, and then it, it connects to other lines. Uh, your fares can be paid. All the ways that fares are paid on a Metro Transit bus right now, with the Go-To Card, the Metro, uh, Link passes, as well as cash and other, other means that are accepted on the buses and, uh, light rail. Um, let's see here. The only other item I have is recognition of yet another grant, uh, that was, uh, granted to 66 West. So Beacon received $400,000 from the Metropolitan Council for the development of 66 West. So that basically matches the $500, $550,000 from the city of Edina, as well as that matching amount from, uh, Hennepin County. So congratulations to Beacon, and, uh, thanks to Metropolitan Council for making... So congratulations to Beacon, and thanks to Metropolitan Council for making that project even more viable. That's what I've got.
Thank you. We've actually got two letters from the Met Council related to 66 West. One was the grant you mentioned for 400. And then there's another grant from the Livable Communities Transitory Development Grant for 66 West, amount of $900,000. So total of $1,013, 1.3. There is, in my correspondence, a letter from the Metro District Engineer at Mindot wondering if we would appoint or asking us to appoint to what they call the Policy Advisory Committee for the upcoming highway, US Highway 169 project that'll run adjacent to our community over on the west side of our community. They would like the appointment of one council member to represent Edina on the Policy Advisory Committee with respect to the mobility work that they'll be doing because they're going to be shutting down the highway. And that first meeting is on Thursday, February 11th, 3:30 to 5:00 at Hopkins City Hall. I've had some offline discussions with council members. And Member Brindle, you are interested in serving on this Policy Advisory Committee, is that right?
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
I'm going to hand you this letter from the Metro District Engineer.
Great.
And I think we'll let -- and then I think both Members Stewart and Member Staunton, would one of you be agreeable to serving as an alternate?
Certainly.
All right. Member Stewart as an alternate.
Okay.
And if Member Brindle cannot be there for one reason or another, because they're requesting an alternate appointment as well. So that's great. Thank you for volunteering, both of you. And then today, some of us participated in a press conference with the Lieutenant Governor on 494 and East Bush Lake Road, and the city of Bloomington advanced a project out there through Hennepin County, through the TAB that we sit on as a community, and also through the TED Program at the state. That's a Transportation Economic Development Program that's put together through the legislature. And they funded, I think, close to 30 projects under the TED Program.
Eleven.
Eleven? Just 11?
Thirty-two proposed.
Thirty-two, all right. Thirty-two proposed, funded 11. And one of those projects they're going to fund or help fund with about a $7 or $8 million grant, total project cost close to $25 million, is to create access to 494 off East Bush Lake Road. You know that's particularly challenging because there's a railroad track at grade there, and so they're going to have to go up and over with this new.
Access going west?
Access going west.
And then, okay, there is an exit, though, from the west getting off yet, is there?
You can get off from west to east.
Yep.
Oh, there is a westbound.
As you go eastbound.
That's right.
As you go eastbound 494, you can exit East Bush Lake Road. So that'll take care of that interchange good help for Minnesota's Main Street, which is 494. And then the other thing in the correspondence I thought we should make quick note of is for February 13th, the annual, what has now become the annual Chinese New Year celebration will take place at Valley View Middle School, 12 to 4:30 February 13th, which is a Saturday Year of the Monkey. And I think you should all plan on trying to attend, at least for part of it. It's a terrific celebration, and it's fun to be part of it. The red monkey, not just the monkey. All right. Very good. So that's it for me. I hope everybody had a great holiday season, and Happy New Year to everyone, as Member Stewart noted. And I join in that pronunciation. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of quick things, and then we can get to our HRA meeting. One, we started a new practice a couple of years ago of taking a council portrait every year at the second meeting in January. So we will be doing that for you next week for -- to record your images forever. Wednesday, the 20th, right before the council -- right before council meeting, right? Okay. We'll wrap up our work session.
But you're not replacing the 11-year-old picture I have in there that makes me look much younger.
We won't do that.
Okay.
We won't do that, but for posterity. We have a new microphone queuing system that's available to us in the council chambers that we haven't yet activated. And it will allow you, as council members, to indicate that you wish to speak without raising your pen or slapping the table or raising your hand.
Wearing red.
You'll be able to press the "press your microphone" button, and that will make a little thing blink in front of the mayor. You'll be a dot on his monitor, and he'll be able to see which one of you is blinking, and he will call on you, and you'll.
Press your mic again, and your mic will be.
That is excellent.
It doesn't tell him --
Doesn't tell him to look down.
It doesn't tell him which one of you blinked your microphone first. He doesn't control your microphone.
I am his pen assistant, so could we just move it over here? Could Mary at least be his backup for it?
Sure.
Okay.
So we don't have it -- we don't have it active tonight, but we will have it active next time, so.
Okay. We just have to think of a belt and suspender system in case it doesn't completely work.
We'll have a contingency plan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have to -- another thing that is good for you to do is an annual performance review of the city manager. We have done it essentially the same way every year I've been here. We've contracted it to Harry Bruhl, who you've -- I think all of you have met and worked with at least once for Councilmember Staunton and Stewart. But there are other people in that business, and if -- how -- I need some direction from you about how you'd like to proceed.
Member Swenson?
I like consistency. Since he was involved in your hiring, and he has been involved in your review, my preference would be to continue with Harry. I don't see any reason to change, you know? And the consistency, I think, in this particular case, since there's no reason to change, is important.
Member Brindle?
I would be interested in, from a budgetary standpoint, what we pay for this and whether we could either -- are we incapable of doing a review without having a professional guide us? And I guess if we were to consider having someone local who does this, would it be less expensive from a monetary standpoint?
Okay. Member Staunton, Member Stewart, any thoughts?
No, I concur with Member Swenson that there's value to continuity, both in terms of setting of expectations and then feedback regarding performance. So there's value in that. I also, to give a little bit of a counterpoint to Member Brindle's suggestion, I think having a professional dispassionate person who can objectively compare your performance with performance of city managers in other cities and give some constructive criticisms, as well as suggestions and, you know, applauding the appropriate things, I think there's real value in that. I think there's a danger to -- because of relationships, if any of us tried to review you, I think we would be open to criticism, and probably justifiably so, of allowing our relationship personally with you to affect our ability to be a dispassionate reviewer. So I think there's value in having a third party do that.
Fair enough.
Member Staunton, any particular thoughts?
I think it's important to do one, and I'm fine with however anybody wants to proceed with it.
I'd like to proceed with Harry Bruhl one more time, at least, we can -- and I think Member Brindle's raising some interesting issues, but let's look at those downstream and use Harry Bruhl this time.
I'll answer those questions for Councilmember Brindle.
Okay.
All right. Good.
I want to let you know that we have appointed the members of the Liquor Store Task Force.
Oh, excellent.
We're going to make them -- we're going to publicly announce them probably tomorrow. But they include David Burley, Ed Kraykraft, Nick Paul, and Mike Lynch. Those are the four. And we've got one person who I've yet to hear from. I'm going to hear from that person tomorrow morning. So a good group, and we're ready to begin giving them a little bit of background and then turning them loose. Final thing for me is, just to go back from something we talked about earlier in the meeting, the sidewalk projects, we've really seen a lot of value to the creation of the PACS fund and putting Mark Nolan in that role. I think all of you have had a chance to work with Mark. You know he's an exceptional talent, and we're lucky to have him on our staff. But one of the benefits that we've had from having a person like Mark Nolan who knows what they're doing and having a dedicated source of revenue is that it has allowed us to leverage a lot of outside grant funds. In three projects, Cornelia, the Oak Lawn-Park Lawn Connection, and on Xerxes, together we've leveraged over $400,000 in extra grant funds from outside the community to help build sidewalks in this community because we've had somebody who's aware of it and will do all the work, and because we've had the money on hand to match those grants. So it's really been a pretty spectacular success in those regards. That's all I've got.
Good. Thank you. That prompt any other thoughts for council members? Otherwise, we'll adjourn the council meeting and convene the HRA. All right. Council meeting of January 5th, 2016 stands adjourned. Calling to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting for January 5th, 2016. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
Chair Hovland?
Here. We've got a form of agenda in front of us this evening for the Edina HRA. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second? Got a motion, second, to adopt the agenda. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Minutes for December 15, 2015. Any changes or corrections? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second? Got a motion, second, to approve the minutes of the December 15, 2015 HRA meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next matter in front of us is addressing a bylaw requirement that we elect officers for the coming year, and the officers to be elected include the positions of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary for the Edina HRA. Does anyone have a recommendation there?
Can I propose a slate?
Member Swenson?
For Chair, the mayor. For Vice Chair, Kevin, because of his planning experience. And for Secretary, Ann.
All right. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Next is the appointment of the Executive Director of the HRA, which I think has been recommended to be our city manager.
So moved. Second?
Okay, is there a motion, second? We got a motion, second, to appoint City Manager Scott Neal as the Executive Director of the Edina HRA. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. Resolution 2016-01 mimics the requested public hearing setting for Grandview II Tax Increment Financing District.
Before we move on to that, one of our citizens, Manager Neal, pointed out to me that we need to have certificates of appointment filed with the state, and that apparently mine and Kevin's were never filed from last year, so we want to make sure that gets done.
Your Honor, members.
Yep, Clerk Mangan.
I filed them with deed last January. We have an acknowledgment from them that they were received.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So the purpose of HRA Resolution 2016-01 was to set a public hearing relative to the proposed establishment of a Grandview II Tax Increment Financing District. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion, second, to adopt the Resolution 2016-01 for the purposes stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. And then the next matter before the HRA is the reappointment to the Edina Housing Foundation for a term ending 3/119 of Mr. Jack Rice.
So moved.
Second?
Got a motion, second, to reappoint Bernard "Jack" Rice to the Edina Housing Foundation for a term ending 3/119. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Member Brindle?
I just have a question on this. I love Jack Rice, and he does wonderful work on the Housing Foundation, as do the other members of the Housing Foundation. Are members of the Edina Housing Foundation bound to the same term limits that apply to other commissions?
We've never put term limits on the Edina Housing Foundation.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say nay. Carried. The reappointment of Jack Rice is confirmed to the term ending 3/119. And the 2016 HRA meeting schedule. Manager Neal, did you want to comment on that?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. We had some discussion at the end of our work session that preceded this meeting that the council would be interested in looking at the possibility of scheduling a -- using our currently scheduled work sessions as work sessions for the HRA. So we're going to -- Assistant Manager Schaefer and I are going to take a look at that work session calendar. We're going to see what's locked into certain dates or not locked into certain dates. We're going to see if we can make that happen for you. We believe that there's going to be a need in 2016 for a number of new HRA meetings because of the abundance of housing development going on that you really haven't had in the past. We think council would benefit from having some additional time for policy discussion in that regard, but scheduling these at a time when you're already here and you're already ready for a meeting is also good practice. So we're going to see if we can make that happen, and I'll report back to you at the January 20th meeting.
All right. Thank you, Manager Neal. Anything else from anyone on the HRA? Member Stewart?
Just that Executive Director Neal, if the need arises, I think we said that -- I think we want to be sure that we are open to the possibility of calling an ad hoc meeting work session for the HRA if there's a volume of work that requires that.
Yes, and we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
And ad hoc for us will never be more than three days earlier because we have a three-day notice requirement.
All right. Does that conclude the work of the HRA?
What?
Manager Neal?
It does.
All right. The HRA meeting of January 5th, 2016 stands adjourned.